All right, I've got seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order the November fifteenth, 2021, meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Kuskudus.
Here.
Mr. Stavropoulos.
Here.
Mr. Vessi.
Here.
Ms. Vehil.
Here.
Mr. Kulianos.
Here.
Mr. Andriotis.
All right, we have a quorum, item number two on our agenda, is approval of the minutes of the September twentieth meeting. Do I have a motion?
I have a question before I vote.
Okay.
I was going through the minutes real quickly, and I noticed there were some inconsistencies in the minutes. Let me see where I had noted. One of the things that discussed on the applicant with regard to, actually, the safe and safer, which was a big issue at the commission meeting, you know, the question was safer. No time did the presenter or the traffic engineer that the city hired mention that it was safe, even though her testimony indicated it was safe at the commission meeting. I think she was asked multiple times if it was safe or safer, and both all times she said it was safer, not safe, and I want to make that noted.
Can you, what page was that on?
Let's see, on page nine. Ms. Graham asked, Ms. Hess meant what she said, the proposal was a safer alternative than other proposals. Ms. Hess noted that the other full meeting openings had more conflict points than what the applicant proposed for the project. What I remember in the discussion was it was asked again if it was safe or safer, and again, the response was it was safer, not safe, which was different testimony at the commission meeting, and I just want that noted. Also, there was a question with regard to, where is it at?
I just didn't.
Mitigation as to what the applicant indicated as far as mitigation was concerned as to the number of peak trips. And I think the developer or the applicant said that they were opportunities for Pinellas and Pasco bus routes, but in fact, Ms. Vincent noted, Ms. Vincent notes in here, there was ongoing coordination with these agencies for services as needed. And if I remember, Renee, the testimony was that both Pinellas and Pasco declined to put a bus stop at that location when queried, and I wonder if that should be noted in the record as well.
Keep in mind, these are action minutes, this is not the record. The record is the actual recording of the meeting, so whatever changes you're proposing here tonight, I'm going to ask that Kim go back and check the record to make sure what the exact information is.
Well, I know that's.
And then that would mean that you guys are not going to be approving the minutes. If there are going to be required changes that need to be made, they'll come back before.
Fair enough.
Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion.
And could we get the page number for that second change that Mr. Kuskudus put in?
I think it was on page seven.
Okay, would you like to make your motion?
I do, I would like to motion that we do not accept the minutes as provided at this meeting.
A second.
Can we have a roll call, please? And to clarify, a yes vote is no on accepting the minutes correctly, correct?
Yes.
I have one more, just because we're going straight to roll call before any discussion. I also have some concerns about the verbiage, and I know this is just the printed portion of it, but I want to go back and check the meeting, that it's being represented the way it was actually discussed at that time. So I just wanted to add that as part of the discussion.
Is there a specific provision or section of the minutes that you wanted to have looked at to be corrected, Mr. Vessi?
Thank you for asking. Specifically, in reference to my own questions in regards to the school bus stops, and then, and.
What page are those?
Thank, give me just a moment, thank you.
I saw it in there.
That's page eleven. Since they're not paragraph numbered, we'll just say page eleven halfway down. And then I'm also concerned about page twelve in regards to, bottom of page twelve, Mr. Morgan asked Mr. Panney about the site flooding, and that there was a note that an engineer designed this site not to flood. I don't recall that conversation or that statement being made, and I'm just going to go double check it.
And further, page six, it quotes me as asking about bikes. I don't remember ever mentioning bikes.
Okay, keep in mind, these are not quotations, these are action minutes. So they are not a verbatim transcript of the meeting as it was held. So I would just say, if there, whatever other things that you wish the secretary to check on, I think Kim can go back and compare it to the record. But again, these are just action minutes.
But we want our action minutes to be reflective of what actually transpired.
Right. So what it was saying, if they're generally okay, then we're supposed to approve them?
No, I, my.
Anyway, anyways, on.
On a balance?
Regardless, on page six, I don't remember saying anything about bikes. There you go, so. I want to debate it.
I call for the motion.
Yes.
Who was the second?
Did we get a second?
Yeah, you did.
I seconded.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kulianos.
Yes.
Ms. Vehil.
Yes.
Mr. Vessi.
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos.
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudus.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes. All right, I believe John Kulianos needed to make a brief comment.
Yeah, I cleared this with the chairman, that I have a personal issue that I have to attend to tonight, so I'm going to be leaving the meeting, but I wanted to, on the record, to express how proud I am of Mike Kuskudus and him representing, you know, not officially representing this board, but I concur with everything that he said at the Board of Commission meetings. And it was a little discerning that we had done, in my opinion, an exceptional job of questioning and analyzing the proposal, and that only one commissioner mentioned us in any of the deliberations and any of the questioning during that entire Board of Commissioner, what, two or three or how many days ordeal that was. But I'm proud of this board and the work we did, and I'm exceptionally proud of Mike Kuskudus.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. And I'd like to add total agreement. I thought Mike's comments were perfect, given the situation. All right, that brings us to application number twenty-one dash one forty-nine, an amendment to the City of Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Plan to Add a New Property Rights Element. Do we have a staff presentation?
Good evening, Renee Vincent, Planning and Zoning Director. As you know, this came before the board last month for consideration, and ultimately the board did deny it. I wanted to bring this back for reconsideration and to provide some additional information. We did provide the Pinellas County ordinance as well as St. Pete's. You know, the subject of this is to create and adopt a property rights element, which is required by Florida statutes. In the staff report, you know, we identified the four bulleted items are the things that have to be in this amendment. I do understand the board's concern about the word balancing. I have absolutely no issues with removing that. As this is drafted right now, I left it the way it was when it came to the board before. I would propose that under Goal One, which currently reads, "The city shall ensure that regulatory and land use decisions are based upon a balancing of," we would strike a balancing of and just leave it as is from that point forward. You know, what we're trying to do really is make sure that, you know, when the legislature adopted this, you know, they kind of put their thumb on the scale a little bit toward property rights. And so what we're trying to ensure with this is that property rights don't become an overriding consideration at the expense of the rest of the comprehensive plan. So I do understand, you know, the concerns that's already been expressed about the balancing, so I would propose that we would just remove that. And then I believe Mr. Kuskudus had brought up under Policy one point one point one, which those are the actual enumerated items straight out of the state statute. Number four, the right of the property owner to dispose of his or her property, Mr. Kuskudus had brought up. There are other ownership entities, so I would just propose that that be reworded to read as the right of a property owner to dispose of his, her, or other ownership entity property through the sale or gift. So with that, we'll stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Renee, I actually, I get, I actually paid attention to them. I get legislative updated materials, and mostly I just glanced through them and not really pay attention to them, but I did see this in, as far as the advance sheets on the legislative proposals. I think there's actually some bills still that are pending with regard to property rights. I think, I don't know if they've passed or not, but, you know, there's heavily weighted on the health and safety of.
Bills to change what the state's already done?
No, maybe that's the bill as it was read, the way I read it, it may be proposals, we may have passed them, because our stuff comes in late.
Yeah, what I'm, yeah, what I'm reading to you is that is adopted and was enacted, enacted July the first, so.
Yeah, well, maybe I.
To Mr. Kuskudus, session doesn't start until January?
I got him in the Florida bar, a reptile book that I get every quarter or something like that, and I kind of.
Okay, yeah, so next session starts.
I assumed they were passed.
Yeah, next session starts in January. This past session, this bill was passed.
Okay.
As it's in your materials.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if it was passed, or that was just a bill that was in there, but I just wanted to substantiate the concerns that was brought in by the statute, by the legislature. So I just, you know, we just had a, I had a problem, and I think a lot of us did it with the word balancing.
Understand.
And again.
And that's why I brought it back.
And cleaning up the fact that an entity could have a property right as well. So I guess I said my piece.
I have a question, and I probably missed it by not being here at the last meeting, but can you explain a little bit why they felt this was necessary? I mean, are people's property rights not currently protected?
I think I'm going to defer to the attorney on that one.
I think they wanted to codify it.
Yeah, I will say, personal property rights have been a hot topic in the legislature for the past several years. Versions of something like this have been before the legislature and gone through committees several times before. It's just the complement of the legislators that are currently sitting, what their constituents are asking for, and what they're bringing before the body. It goes in ebbs and flows. I can't tell you the particular intent behind all of this, most of that's done behind closed doors with various lobbyists, but I can tell you there's been a big push for personal property rights. We saw some changes to Harris Act, the Property Rights Protection Act, and some other property rights elements coming up through the legislation this past session, and then this coming session, there's a few more that are set to be presented. So it's just been a hot button topic for a lot of the larger players up in the state legislature.
And so far as impact on us, so later this evening, you actually have an agenda item that has a land use map amendment in it. I can't submit that up to the state unless this goes with it or is already gone. I have, you know, so they're going to block us from having any land use map amendments if we don't adopt this, so.
Well, and I understand the need typically to respond to whatever they do, because they have more power than we do, I guess, but I was just curious, because I thought people clearly have the right to do certain things with their property. It seems redundant to me, but in any event, is there a particular type of case that you can see that, I mean, I don't see where it really ever comes into play, because, I mean, there's a basic assumption that people have property rights, I thought.
I, I'm as baffled as the next person about this, but I'm also never quite surprised by what might come out of our legislative body in Tallahassee. So, I mean, I think, you know, this was, I want to say this went through several different sessions before it actually got adopted, so it was, it was a work in progress, and, you know, I don't know how else to, what else I can add to the conversation.
Okay, well, I understand, it's one of those things, but I would, I would question them if they were here.
I understand.
Do we have any other questions for staff?
I'll make a motion.
Do we need to?
Oh.
Public comment.
Public, that's what I thought, yeah. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
Jumping ahead.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I didn't think this was of great importance of our guest here tonight, but anyways, application twenty-one dash one forty-nine, I make a motion that we approve the ordnance as amended.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kulianos. Ms. Vehil.
Yes.
Mr. Vessi.
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos.
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudus.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, item number four, can we have our quasi judicial announcement and swearing of speakers, please?
Renee, before you go, Renee, are you gone for the evening?
I am, I just want something.
Well, I was going to wait for comments, because I need to get your input on, at the end of the meeting. I guess we got to wait for our comments, staff comments, till later on, so.
If you want me to stay, I'll stay.
Well, it's up to you. I'd like for you to stay.
Oh, we'll do it.
Okay.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
All right, that brings us to item number five, application twenty-one dash eighty-three. It's a conditional use approval to allow for outdoor storage on the southwest corner of North Safford Avenue and East Lime Street. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, thank you, Pat McNeese, Principal Planner. This is an application submitted by Mike and Robin Carr. And I hope this is, hold on. Okay, this property is located, there are two pieces of property here. The primary one we're talking about is a vacant lot on the southeast corner of Lime Street and Safford Avenue, and then that is adjacent to one fifty-nine East Oakwood, also owned by the applicant. The surrounding area is basically warehouse, light industrial, there's some single family to the west here, Santos Isle Apartments are down here to the south, some retail, well, vacant retail business over here to the east. This is a conditional use request for outdoor storage in the special area plan, in the residential plus industrial office transect. And this is an expansion of an existing business, and it is proposed to be screened with heavy This is the vacant property, or basically the unbuilt property that is the primary focus of this application. It's basically, it used to, it had a building on it previously that was demolished, business, I believe, and what's left is an old asphalt parking lot or entrance and an old drainage depression. The rest of it is a grassed area, there are some trees along the west side, and the applicant is proposing outdoor storage on this property, as well as some on the adjacent property that has building on it. These photographs show some of the conditions, the outdoor storage is there, so the applicant is here to basically make it legitimate under the transect code. Your transect code allows these light industrial type of uses by right, but the outdoor storage is a conditional use. So this is the view of that vacant lot from Lime Street and from Safford Avenue. Again, just to look at some of the materials stored on the lot, just using the existing And there are some, this is that asphalt parking area, there are some trees in the area that they're kind of working around. This is the existing building to the south, where the salvage operation is conducted, and I believe they. And I believe they, um, have sales there and, um, some rehab of some of the items that they, they obtained. As you can see, there is some storage along, uh, the east side of the building, adjacent to Safford Avenue. And the applicant has requested outdoor storage all the way around this building. You can also see there is a grade change there from Safford. This is the view from the Pinellas Trail that's adjacent, uh, to the property. So, it kinda gives you an idea of what that looks like. This side and this, this whole property is fenced with, uh, with a barbed wire on the top. This is the, um, built property, the, um, view from the south from Oakwood Street showing the, the entrance and the building, um, and some of the items outdoors. This is, this actually is, is more of an outdoor display of merchandise here which is prohibited, uh, in this transect, in, in the special area plan. The outdoor storage adjacent to the building to the west, which I'll show you on a layout in a minute, has already been screened with some, with, uh, some fabric on that existing chain link fence. So, that has been screened, um, and that is, uh, listed in the staff report as one of the items that staff would like to have seen. Again, the vacant lot showing the survey and just showing the layout of some of the items on the property. There are two containers and then the rest is pretty much open storage. This is the built property. This is the building. And there to the west is the outdoor storage. The applicant would also like to store things to the east along Safford Avenue that I was showing you. There's both properties together. And this, um, really illustrates where the outdoor storage is and will be. All that blue shading, so all the vacant lot will have outdoor storage. And then all the way around the building, um, the areas that aren't fenced and screened would be outdoor display and we're recommending that that not be permitted. So, the applicant has, um, proposed screening. This is the vacant lot. It, it's kinda, I just, um, turned it sideways so you could see how it matches up. So, north is to the right, East Lime Street, and the top is, is west. The applicant proposes a, um, a solid, uh, landscape, heavy landscape screening to screen that outdoor storage. And I believe the applicant is here and can talk about what that screening is. To the north, I'm sorry, to the west is a single family and single family along there, pretty heavily treed already. There is one Brazilian pepper that we've asked the applicant to remove, which, uh, he has agreed to do. So, that's pretty well buffered. Obviously, to the south is their other properties, so. The main area of buffering is along Lime Street and then along Safford Avenue. And then we are asking for them to go ahead and buffer, uh, or, or screen basically all this outdoor storage along South Safford with landscaping, solid fence, something to screen that of at least five feet. We're looking for, um, transect code wants screening, uh, between three and eight feet. And, and we're looking for at least, at least five feet to hide those, um, items that we're, we're seeing being stored in that area. So, with respect to your, um, uh, review criteria, again, the, this proposal does comply with the land development code. Outdoor display of merchandise is not permitted. But it, it does comply if we can go ahead and get some sort, sort of good screening of that use. This is in the South Pinellas character district, uh, which encourages a mix of uses. The transect right along South Pinellas Avenue is more of a retail mixed-use, um, residential transect. And then this transect behind is, is asphalt nineteen, so it's, it's, um, you know, trying to encourage a greater mix of uses, industrial. And, uh, the uses that are around here, I think there's a, um, paint equipment company, there's a business center, there's a couple warehouses. They're, they're pretty much clean, um, well-run industries and these are the types of, of businesses we wanna encourage in this transect. So, the screening will help with the compatibility of, of the look of it. And with the Pinellas Trail being right there will help with that. The use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It's in the community redevelopment district, so it's consistent with that. It's not located in the historic district and, um, the topography and ground surface will not be altered and drainage review is not required at this time for the use and materials that are being stored. So, um, this will expand an existing, uh, warehouse, light industrial business and it's, and property values will be maintained with this use and with the screening. Uh, the property's already served by the city and, um, this is thought to be a, a good, um, use of this existing infill area. So, staff is recommending six conditions of approval. First is that we go ahead and screen everything at at least the five-foot height. The outdoor display not be allowed, that the applicant obtain building permits for the containers. Building usually, mostly reviews that they're anchored properly, so they need to pull building permits for those. Go ahead and do a review of whatever signs are not permitted and go ahead and get those permitted. Remove the Brazilian pepper and expiration of the u- conditional use if building permits are not pulled within one year. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. The idea of, of, of landscaping as a buffering system, is there, is there a process in place? Because, you know, landscaping could be, it could deteriorate, it could die and the purpose of the landscape buffer goes away. How is that policed over time?
It, uh, I mean, the short answer to that, just like anything, is code enforcement.
Yeah.
And you were right, um, landscaping is, is, can be a little bit tough sometimes. People install the stuff and, and it dies or something. We could ask for some sort of survivability guarantee or something, but, um, on this one, we're looking for an opaque screen and I think, um, that's, you know, without going into it, that's how this, this got here in the first place, was code enforcement.
That's the preferred buffer, is the, is the opaque fence or screen as opposed to?
As far as whether it's preferred, I mean, you know, that's, that's up to you all if you, you think, I mean, uh, solid landscaping and the applicant can probably elaborate on what that's gonna look like. Would, would be aesthetically pleasing, but as far as the maintenance.
Yeah, cause sometimes it's not necessarily the applicant, it could be a subsequent owner who does it maintain.
Yeah.
And, and the purpose of the landscape buffer obviously is to provide a buffering system between the, in the neighborhood. And if, if, God forbid, you know, the, you know, title changes hands and, and they, they may not be as diligent at maintaining the landscaping. Number two, the, or my second question is, is there a capacity as to number? I don't, I would imagine this is gonna be for, uh, maybe the applicant could explain it, boats, cars, the other outdoor storage. Maybe I'll wait for the applicant to tell me what is, because I don't know what the capacity of, of, you said, said storage facility. Is that indoor storage? Okay, I'll wait, I guess I'll wait for the applicant.
We'll have to wait till you come up.
I'll wait for the applicant.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, yeah, the, whatever's indoors is inside the permitted industrial use, but this is outdoor storage. Um, the applicant has stated, uh, for the technical review committee that there won't be any, any chemicals there. You know, a lot of vehicles or any of that sort of thing. So, you know, that, and fire marshal did review this, uh, building reviewed it and, and we're taking the applicant on his word that, that this is, the types of, of architectural salvage items that he's storing there now will continue to be
Oh, I see.
the items.
Okay.
Recorder. Any other questions?
I, I have some questions. Are you finished, Mike?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. I have five questions.
Okay.
First, um, if this conditional use, if approved, does it become permanent for the property rights? Going along with Mike's questioning that, meaning that should this owner leave the property, it becomes outdoor storage for, in perpetuity?
As long as the use is continued, yeah. Conditional uses are contin- if they, um, terminate for more than six months, then someone would have to come in. But it goes with the land, yes.
Okay. Are you aware, does, does this property currently have code violations against it for it being used as outdoor storage now?
Well, the the code enforcement department received a complaint about it. That's why the applicant came in. And then what they usually do, as you may or may not know, is they send a courtesy letter first and say, hey, we got this complaint, um, planning and zoning says you need a site plan. So, uh, the applicant was contacted and the applicant came in and applied for this site plan and conditional use.
Okay.
So, there's no, to answer your question, there's no further code enforcement action unless the violation is not resolved.
Okay. This is tough for me to ask and it goes along the lines of, again, what Mike asked about. When you say screen and I see it referred to as opaque screen, a landscape buffer is a landscape buffer and an opaque screen is an opaque screen. They're, they're completely different items, right?
Well, I mean, you know, the question is can you achieve an opacity? Like, sometimes you'll specify something like eighty percent opacity with a hedge. So, that's the question. And you, you know, if you all feel like a, a fence with some plantings in front, a fence would be better. You know, fl- staff is completely flexible. One night you might wanna talk to the applicant about what they're wanting, would like to do, but yeah. We just would like to see it screened from view.
Right, okay. And then for the submittals, um, I'm just gonna hold it up. That, that one that's got the blue stuff on it and then the next one that's hand drawn, that's geometric. So, as I understand it, on the page with the blue, it clearly denotes proposed six-foot chain link fence with fabric all the way around the property with twenty-five-foot roll gate. But the next page says Viburnum and Potocarpus.
Yeah, and we did go through a couple iterations of submittals with this applicant. They originally proposed chain, he originally proposed chain link, then he, uh, changed his mind to landscaping. So, I would, I would say disca- and I added this, this here so you could see the layout. But you're right, it still says chain link fence, so, um, we would need to clarify with the applicant that, uh, what the intent is there.
And, and a further question about outdoor storage is, 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 cause my memory serves, many, many years ago, we had a landscape company that had, was doing some outdoor storage over on the other side of Alt Nineteen. And he got himself in a little, kinda in the same place and he was required to put up a, a taller fence, an eight-foot fence with the screen on it, I think. Forget the name of that company. But my question is, in the future, could anything be stored there such as lawn equipment or trucks or stuff? Outdoor storage is just, anything goes, outdoor storage?
Yeah, outdoor storage accessory to this business. So, you know, we're not talking about somebody coming in, uh, and these lots are not combined. This lot could be sold off if somebody's, if the lot was sold off and somebody started parking boats on it or trucks. That is not accessory, that is not an accessory used at this business. And that's what this outdoor storage is, is, um, is intended as and being reviewed as. The principal business is on one fifty-nine East Oakwood to the south.
Okay, and then last question would be this, is the ordinance or the proposals as written would put that verbiage and lock it down so that three years from now when this, unfortunately, the reality is things change and people change and you're not here and I'm not here, that we're not gonna find someone waving a flag saying, I've got conditional use for outdoor storage and that's where I'm putting my, uh, lawn mowing machines and such. That we, we'll have that in verbiage that it either, that outdoor use disappears completely or it can be enforced in a way that, that we're not setting a bad precedent for five years down the road.
Yes, and we, you know, if you, if we want to add that as a condition, that, that would strengthen it. Outdoor storage permitted as accessory to, um, or limited to, um, architectural salvage or something like that, existing business. And we'll hear from the applicant. I believe it says intent to eventually build a building on this site if I'm, but I'll let him talk about that.
That intent is great, but you've got what's in front of us right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We deal with those all the time.
That's all my questions. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, that got sold and, yeah, you're right.
We could add a condition to that effect. It would,
Sure.
make sure that, that, uh, something doesn't happen in the future.
I, I do have one question, Mr. Chairman. Do you know if this area is a targeted redevelopment area at all?
Well, it's in the community redevelopment district, yes.
So, so the idea is to, you know, cause knowing where the property i- is and, and the surrounding area, I guess this is targeted for improvements along that corridor. So, we're, we're kind of targeting or hoping to see that area thrive economically and commercially. That'd be a fair statement.
Yes, now this transect is, is, you know, designated for mix of residential and industrial office.
And I, you know, and when I, when I brought up cars and, and stuff like that, now I realize the type of business that he's running and I understand, uh, understand it a little bit better. So, I'd like to hear from the applicant if less anybody has any.
Okay.
Any more questions for staff?
I have one question. So, the only access to the property is from South Safford Avenue?
Yes.
And it's pertaining to the twenty-five-foot roll gate? That's the only access, correct?
That's the only access, yeah.
Okay, now, I'm, I'm not reading this because there's no scale here, so it, it's not completely understandable. I kinda scaled it off from the whole length of South Safford Avenue from one point to the other based on that twenty-five-foot roll gate and there's about a hundred and fifty linear feet on the whole length of that property.
That's right.
But if you look on the very top, it says proposed six-foot chain link fence, two hundred feet with fabric. That doesn't make any sense at all.
So, that, uh, that original proposal included a hundred and fifty feet along the east side plus fifty feet along the north side. I think what he's trying to say here is that all of this, two hundred feet, was gonna be the chain link fence with the fabric.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Like I say, he can clarify his intent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, uh, would the applicant like to make a presentation or answer questions?
Sure, I'll answer. Any questions?
If you could just stand at the podium for us so that we can get your voice on the record.
State your name and address, please.
And were, did, were you part, did you, were you sworn in when I did the swearing in?
No.
I don't think I saw you stand. Could you just raise your right hand for me?
Sure.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
My name's Mike Carr. You want my home address or this address?
Doesn't matter.
One fifty-nine East Oakwood is the applicant's address, or southwest corner of Lime and Safford is, is the address.
I, I do, you, you have an architectural salvage, correct? That's?
Yes.
Okay. I, and I, I apologize for some reason when I said outdoor storage. You know, I always equate it to cars and boats and stuff like that, but that's not your intent. Your intent is to, is to, uh, maintain your, or expand your outdoor architectural, what do you call it, uh, salvage business?
Right, well, now it's basically, it's pretty much all just piles of wood, stacks of wood that are up off the ground that are covered. Reclaimed wood that we use for inventory. We just needed a place, we just ran out of room, so we needed a place to, uh, store. We just needed a place, we just ran out of room, so we needed a place to store.
Would you be hesitant if this board recommended that you put an opaque fence as opposed to landscape buffer?
No, I would, personally, to cover, to cover it up more and aesthetically, an opaque fence would, would be beneficial, I would think.
And say, and protect your, your property a little bit better?
Yeah, we're not really concerned about protection, but sure, a fence would, it would, yeah.
And are you okay if we put a condition that it would be outdoor storage only that's, that's related to your business, basically?
Yes, that would be good.
I mean, I think, just as a comment, more than a question, really. I mean, I think the fence is definitely the quicker effect to achieve the screening, but I'd hate to see it be done at a complete cost of losing all landscaping to, some landscaping to soften along with the fence would be much more effective from an aesthetic perspective.
Well, it would be. But not the five-foot height, generally down in the, you know, two to three-foot range. Just as, as an enhancement for it.
Right, yeah.
And it, but it wouldn't be according to the drawing. It would, it would run up, it would run up the side and stop at the roll gate and then continue on the other side of the roll gate and continue back around the other side.
Right.
Because it wouldn't be any reason to juke it back around the parking lot if it's, if we're going to have the roll gate.
Now, up along, along the side of the eight-by-forty-foot container there, along the Safford side, there's not really a whole lot of space there. So what, what, or how was that being treated?
So I think the property line, we'll, we'll have about six foot between the fence and the, and the containers if the fence is on the property line. Well, if we're going to put any landscaping, the fence needs to be set back off the property line if we're going to get the landscaping on the, within the property.
Yeah, it'd be pretty hard to store anything there and put landscaping along that side, it seems like.
Yeah, well, it's still going to be a straight-lined fence.
Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant?
In that case.
None, I'll entertain a motion?
Well, we're going to need public comment.
Oh, public comment, sorry. Is there, are there any members of the public in attendance wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, now I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve application twenty-one eighty-three with the, with the conditions. The only change I would make in the conditions is that the, that it'd be an opaque fence and that the, also the criteria that the chairman had indicated that the, the use be consistent with the ongoing business? I think that's how you, or how did you frame it?
Yeah. Basically, basically a part of the existing business, not something different.
Yeah. And all the additional conditions that the, that the city had put in its recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Vesey?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to item number six, application twenty-one dash one oh five. It's a rezoning and land use amendment for point three-eight acres of real property located at nineteen fifty-four South Pinellas. There's two parts to that, ordinance twenty-twenty-one nineteen and twenty-twenty-one twenty. It's the land use and the rezoning. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes. Alakine, Senior Planner. The property is located off of South Pinellas Avenue. It's outlined here in yellow. It's an L-shaped property. The current city boundaries is the shaded area in yellow. Property is just north of Klosterman Road, again, off of South Pinellas Avenue. As you may recall, last month, you reviewed the companion application for annexation of this property into the city of Tarpon Springs city limits. Tonight, we'll be taking action on the two subsequent applications to amend the future land use map as well as the rezoning of the property to take it from the Pinellas County designations to the city of Tarpon Springs designations. As a reminder, again, the applicant is proposing to utilize the existing building that is on site for a medical or a dental office. This property does currently have split zoning and land use. The area that's shaded in red currently has commercial zoning and land use and the area shaded in yellow has residential zoning and land use. It is the intent of this application to put the property into one designation with land use and zoning. When looking at the surrounding land use in the area, it's a mixture of Pinellas County property as well as Tarpon Springs property, but it's primarily commercial along Pinellas Avenue and then residential west of the property. The applicants are proposing to put the property into the CN Commercial Neighborhood Land Use Designation, primarily putting it in a lower intensity land use category than what you see along Pinellas Avenue because of the shape of the property. It does wrap into the residential neighborhood, so this would make it a lower intensity commercial designation that's more compatible with residential neighborhoods. The surrounding zoning, again, it's primarily a commercial along Pinellas Avenue, residential west of the property. And the proposed zoning category is NB Neighborhood Business, again, to have a lower intensity district that's adjacent to the residential properties. As far as the review criteria, the proposed amendment for the future land use map is generally consistent with the applicable comprehensive plan policies. The application does require a countywide plan map amendment to put the entire property into a retail category as opposed to split residential retail. This is your review criteria for the rezoning. Again, it's primarily consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. There are appropriate services to the property and it will not negatively impact the surrounding areas. Staff does recommend approval of both ordinances. Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen is the amendment to the future land use map to take it from the Pinellas County Residential Low and Commercial General categories to the city of Tarpon Springs Commercial Neighborhood category. And ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash twenty is the amending the zoning atlas from Pinellas County R four, one, two and three family residential and C two general commercial and services districts to the city of Tarpon Springs Neighborhood Business District. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think we went through this already, deja vu all over again.
Yeah. Questions?
I have no questions.
No questions? Anybody? No? All right.
As Yogi Berra would say, deja vu all over again.
I just have another question.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
I think we have a question, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Did something change from this last time that we were looking at it from this time?
So the only, the only difference is last time you were only taking action on the annexation, so putting the property into the city of Tarpon Springs limits. We had to defer the future land use and rezoning due to a public notice error. So that's why you're just seeing them separately. Typically, you'd see all these together, but the annexation can process independently.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Is the applicant present and would they like to do a presentation or answer questions? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Hushkovahi. I am with Northside Engineering. I have been sworn in. Our office is in Clearwater, three hundred South Balter Road. This is a voluntary annexation. We're glad to be bringing this property into Tarpon Springs. Beautiful city, wonderful staff to work with. Welcome, Renee, back. I'll be glad to ask any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Members of the public?
Again, okay. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I guess I'll make a motion on application twenty-one dash one zero five, the rezoning and land use amendment. Do I have to reference both A and B?
Let's do them in two separate ones so that we get an approval for ordinance twenty-twenty-one nineteen and for twenty-twenty-one twenty separately.
As far as ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen, recommend approval?
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Vesey?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And then on to ordinance twenty-one dash twenty, I make a motion to recommend approval?
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Vesey?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to item number seven, application twenty-one dash one thirty. It's conditional use to allow for entertainment establishment with food, drink service at two oh one East Center Street in the fourteen C transect district of the special area plan. Can we have a staff presentation, please?
Okay, Alakine, Senior Planner, still. Okay, the property is located at the northeast corner of Safford Avenue and East Center Street, again, outlined in yellow on the screen. This property is located within the city's special area plan. That area is all of the gray that you see on the screen here. The red dash line shows the boundary of the special area plan. Outside of that boundary, it's a mixture of residential zoning. The applicants are here today seeking conditional use approval to allow an entertainment establishment with food or drink service. This property is, again, located in the special area plan, therefore the SMART code applies to it and it is located within the T four C residential district transect zone. This district, or the SMART code itself is silent to entertainment uses. Therefore, the closest related use is a restaurant, which requires conditional use approval, which is why you're seeing it here today. The applicant specifically is looking to operate a hatchet throwing business. It's a facility that will be comprised of lane-style throwing pits where each participant throws axes at a stationary wood target. They've indicated that bar service will be available on site, but they will not be having any food preparation on site. They're also looking to utilize a portion of the parking lot along Safford Avenue for an outdoor area. The applicant provided some preliminary renderings of the space for those who may not be familiar with this type of business. So this is looking inside at some of the axe-throwing lanes. This is looking down at those axe-throwing lanes. And then they're proposing to have a second-floor mezzanine, which would be an observation area, so this is looking at that rendering. I'm looking at the site plan. This property is currently developed with a large multi-tenant commercial building. There are some existing office uses in the building. They are looking to occupy the western half of the building, which is the area outlined in orange on the screen. The area that has a dashed green is the part of the parking lot they're looking to use as an outdoor space. Considerations when looking at this application, the first being parking. This project does represent adaptive reuse of an existing building. They're not looking to do any sort of substantial modification to the building. Therefore, the SMART code does not require any parking for this proposed use. Although parking's not required, the applicant did provide a parking needs analysis. They looked at some of their other locations that are of similar size and determined that the non-peak hours, they need approximately sixteen spaces for their peak hours on nights and weekends, about twenty-seven spaces. The property itself has seventeen spaces on site. That does, that excludes the part that they're looking to use for outdoor space. And they've also entered into an off-site parking agreement with the property to the south where there are thirty-two spaces available to them after business hours. The second consideration is the SMART code typically limits retail establishments within the T four C district. This is intended really to provide, you know, compatibility with surrounding residential areas while still allowing neighborhood-serving businesses. The limitations include seating. This district limits a maximum of twenty seats. The applicants are proposing a maximum of seventy-five seats. It's not just tables and chairs, it's a mixture of lounges, couch, couches, bar stools, picnic tables. And then the T four C limits the net retail space at two thousand square feet. The applicants have approximately twenty-one sixty-five square feet of net retail space. The SMART code does provide some flexibility in meeting provisions of the code as long as the overall intent of the SMART code is still met. And these can be adjusted by warrant. When looking at the surrounding context, this is an excerpt of the character district map in this special area plan. This is within the Uptown District. It's right at the boundary of the Uptown District. This property is a little bit unique in that it's an existing large commercial structure within a residential neighborhood. So it's unique to the district that it is located. It is also immediately adjacent to the Downtown District, which is your most intense district within the special area plan where a mixture of uses is encouraged and prevalent. This property is also immediately adjacent to the Pinellas Trail where you see a variety of uses along that in addition to residential. Based off of the, I would say, based off the context of the area as well as the overall intent of the SMART code, which is to encourage mixed-use compact neighborhoods, the increased net retail space as well as increased seating is appropriate to be adjusted by warrant. Moving to your review criteria, they are not proposing any sort of modification to the existing structure, so it doesn't conform it with the Land Development Code. The proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. Again, it's in the special area plan where there's a mixture of uses. It has the Pinellas Trail as well as the Downtown District in immediate vicinity and it is consistent with the overall intent of the special area plan. The use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It is located within the Community Redevelopment District. The property is within the historic district, however, the structure is classified as a non-contributing, nonhistoric. Again, they're not proposing any sort of modifications to the building and the property is not proposed on an environmentally sensitive site. The site is in a mixed-use area. It's an existing structure that will be occupied, so it's not expected to adversely impact the surrounding property values. It is served by existing public facilities and it does represent efficient orderly development by making use of an existing structure. So with that, staff would recommend approval of this resolution that would grant conditional use approval for the operation of an entertainment establishment with food and drink service in the T four C district. Staff also does recommend that the increased number of seats and net retail space for the proposed use be allowed by warrant. Public notice was provided and we have not received anything as of yet. With that, I can answer any questions.
Questions?
Well, I don't have a question, but I want this on the record and I want to be quoted. I think this is pretty cool.
I love this idea. I love that this is coming here.
I'm sure the applicant would agree.
No questions for staff? Is the applicant present and would they like to make a presentation or answer questions? Names and addresses, whoever's going to speak?
My name's Steve Dematos, two zero one E Center.
Jason Cromeliki, two zero one E Center.
And Brendan Wayman, two oh one E Center.
Will Kocner, two one E Center Street.
I would like to reiterate what the last applicant said. It has been a pleasure working with the, with the staff. They've been very helpful in helping to get this process going and answer questions and very nice presentation as well.
Thank you.
And real quick, I'll touch on, touch on the food. We plan to incorporate restaurants down in the Sponge, Sponge Rock District as well as in downtown area to maybe come up and create short menus that we can send our driver to pick up for patrons to eat at the establishment. So we're going to hopefully loop in some more of the surrounding businesses since we're going to be a fairly large establishment.
Where did you come up with the concept? Because this is, this is pretty, this is pretty cool.
So I don't know if you guys have been to the one off of Hillsborough Avenue yet in Tampa? I own that one right now. This originated out of Eaton Town, New Jersey. We went up for my wife's birthday. I'm originally from New Jersey, so we went up. We, I had to put closed-toed shoes on. We went out, that's BYOB there. I'm like, what am I getting into? We did two hours for four of us and I had a blast. Everybody left, left with a smile on their face, a great time. And I was like, I got to bring this energy back. And you know, I finished my military career and I was like, I have to get into something and, and that's what I ended up doing. So, you know, I brought it here and we've had over, with the pandemic, in two years, over thirteen thousand people visit our space in two years. So, you know, I brought it here, and we've had over, with the pandemic, in two years, over thirteen thousand people visit our space in two years.
But I will tell you, like I said, and I wanted to be quoted, this is pretty cool.
So it's, it's going to be quite the spectacle, especially around here, with the way that's going to happen.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
I know that the one up in Tampa, that you always have to book reservations, usually like a couple of weeks out and stuff like that, in order to get a reservation for it. Do you have the same, like, kind of operating hours, and do you think that that, the parking and facility is actually going to facilitate down here? Because I know up there, it does get pretty packed.
It does get packed. I could speak on, this one's going to be a little bigger. We're going to have thirteen pits, where that one in Tampa only has seven pits. So we're going to be able to get a little more traffic in. Yes, the parking might be a little more tighter here, but we're going to definitely let people know to accommodate for that ahead of time. But I, we're going to probably get a lot of foot traffic into our place, for sure, so.
And is it going to be by appointment only at first, or is it going to be, is that where you know where the parking is going to be now, not at first?
Yes, it's going to be by appointment, because that's what we do. We mainly make reservations online, and then usually we have people call or email us or whatnot. But like, the foot traffic here, compared to Tampa, is going to be way different. Like, I guarantee you, there's going to be a lot of people. So that might be the issue, though, like, with the parking and all that. So we're going to definitely come across that.
So you got that, right, you know where the location is, right down the street, you have that paid public parking, which is a block away, less than a five-minute walk. You also have parking over, was it up Orange, I believe, towards Tarpon Tavern?
Thirty-plus spaces next to the tavern.
And we got thirty-two spaces next door, we got seventeen, I don't think we're going to have any issues with parking whatsoever. And we plan to entertain a lot of space on the trail as well. When folks are riding, we're going to have an inside-outside bar, so they can walk up, get waters, Gatorades, take a seat, hang out, relax, and we'll be a part of the trail rides as well.
And that'll also include with the viewing spec, viewing upstairs, where people could come and just view and watch people, that way they know what the establishment's going to be?
Right, exactly. And that's also going to be where they're going to relax, and, and you can drink up there and eat. When you order food, we'll have a few tables, stand-up tables, so you can eat your food there, and as well as partake in watching. We'll have some entertainment TVs, as well as outdoor space with cornhole, large Jenga, things like that, string lights, picnic tables. And we're going to throw some nice turf down there to make it look like nice green grass. So there'll be a nice aesthetic feel on the trail, as well as when you're, you know, during the day and at night.
Just so you, we had Veterans Day last week, and I just wanted, and anybody else who has served the military, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you as well, I definitely appreciate that.
Any further questions for the applicant? No. All right, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to motion that we approve this.
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Vesey?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskutis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskutis, were you the second on that?
Yes, I was.
All right.
Thank you guys very much.
You're all good.
Thank you for choosing us to come with us.
Yeah, we're excited.
Very excited, act excited.
That brings us to item number eight, staff comments. Does the staff have comments?
Earlier today, I sent you the American Planning Association Legislative Reporter. Okay, and speaking of property rights element, okay, that's something I've been following for the last three years, a good example. So this is an excellent summary of planning-related bills. And I'm going to be going ahead and forwarding this to you all, because it, it's tough to go into the Senate website and try to figure out what bills are going on. Good summary, it, you know, brings some of the more important bills, or the, the more interesting bills, I guess, to light in this summary. If you click on the part that says, "Bill Tracking Report," okay? That is something, that is like, kind of like my Bible every legislative session. I love this report. It's, it's basically a list of all the bills that APA is interested in, not everything that, that, you know, that they do, but quick summary, you know, links to the Senate website, where it is in committee. It's just interesting to see what kind of traction these bills get and where they're going. State preemption is a big topic again this year. We've already had some reverses, where a couple of, of legislators are proposing reversing state preemption, so it'll be an interesting session. Everyone is interesting to me. But I will forward you this, if you guys have any questions about it, or want to talk about it during any meetings, or we can do that. But I'll keep forwarding you these, and, and I print them out, you know, it's, you don't have a lot of time. I print it out, put it in your briefcase, and when you're standing in line somewhere, pull it out, mark the bills you like or to want to follow. Then the next time, when you get your updated tracking report, you can look for those bills. It's, it's great.
I did get a chance to, you did send something out today, and I did get a chance to peruse it. Maybe that's where I got confused with regard to some of the, what I read today, or some of the advance sheets, because.
Maybe, yeah. And that was from November fifth. They, they don't come out on a reg, you know, they come out when they have something to say. So the session starts on January eleventh, and bills are starting to be filed. You'll get one of these every so often, then start in January, February, they'll come out every couple of weeks, or, you know, even once a week sometimes, so. I'll be sure to forward that to you guys and everybody.
One of the things I thought I read, and correct me if, if I'm wrong, that the criteria, right now, they may be changing the annexation, where we require annexation for certain, you know, if somebody wants to tap into, to the water or sewer. But I saw something, and I read it somewhere with regard to the change of not-forced annexation. And I read, I didn't read the whole thing in detail.
Okay.
But, but, you know, we have, here we have somewhat, something like a forced annexation, if they're going to tap into our, our utilities. But I, I thought I read something with regard to a bill concerning forced annexation that would be prohibited. But I read it somewhere.
Yeah, as far as the water, you know, utilities, that is a Tarpon Springs, yeah.
Requirement.
Regulation, it's not a state law, but, yeah, I'll look and see what, what's being filed on the annexation, if anything, at the state level. Okay, thanks.
That brings us to item number nine, board comments. Are there members of the board that would like to make comments?
I do, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm sort of, and Renee, this is not, this is not geared at you, trust me. You know, I have a, you know, I have a lot of respect for you, but, and, and I think I expressed it at the last commission meeting. I, I kind of wonder why we're here, because, you know, the process is, and, you know, we're a quasi-judicial board, okay? And, and I understand that, are we an advisory board? And no matter what we do, the commission obviously could, a commission could overrule everything that we, we recommend. Make no mistake, I, I know, I'm not naive to think that, that the applicant, and you all know what I'm talking about, that that property is not going to be developed at some point in time. I'm not naive to that fact. And we had a presentation, and here's, here's where my frustration is. Okay? We vetted the material that we had. Obviously, we weren't comfortable with the presentation, there were some inconsistencies in the presentation. I, my frustration is, I attended the commission meetings, and there was so much more evidence that's presented at a commission meeting than is presented at a zoning meeting, as if we don't exist. If, if, if an applicant's coming here just to give us, and I, I use the dog and pony show, just to go in front of a commission and present ten times more evidence, ten times as many witnesses as they presented to us, we may have approved it, I don't know. But the front, it, it, it's not about this particular piece of property, it's about the process. And, and I don't know what can be done, because for me, their application was incomplete.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so I, I won't say, I'll push back. So the planning, so there were, there were two P, I think, I think some of this can be answered in, the fact that there's, for that particular application, there were, there were, you have your preliminary plan development, and then you have final plan development. And the final plan development does not come to this, this board. It comes to, it goes directly to the Board of Commissioners. The preliminary plan development is admittedly is a, is a less burdensome in terms of the amount of information. Now, I will say this, I was very careful in that what was presented to the planning, is from the staff perspective, what we included in our agenda backup, there were very little changes when it went, from the staff perspective, when it went to the Board of Commissioners. What we did include were, we had, we had received report, updated reports that were part of the final plan development, that spoke directly to the conditions of approval. So all, so we did, in discussion with the city manager, I said, do you want, you know, I think we should go ahead and include those. There were updated reports specific to the conditions of approval. So those things, you didn't get the benefit of those updated reports, but the conditions of approval were in that, that ordinance, so they had to have them. So I think from this, that was the only thing that went to the board from the staff side that was different, is your frustration with what the applicants actually presented as part of their presentation and testimony? I mean, I guess that's, yeah.
To that, to that response, yes, the answer is yes. Because there was different testimony that was presented to us than that was presented to the commission, okay? And, and.
Different experts and things like that.
Well, different experts.
Gotcha.
Different experts, and, and quite frankly, even the traffic expert. Because she, we honed down her, our concern is, is it safe or safer? And I remember, because that's a term of art.
Well, she was here for this, when she was here, yeah.
Yeah, and she kept on insisting, I didn't say it was safe, I said it was safer. You can go back and look at the record. I didn't say it was safe, I said it was safer. And then, when pressed at a commission meeting, it's a different response. And, and in some response, and, and what I heard were some of the, it was different than what was presented to us.
Understand.
Okay? And I'll give you the example, the mitigation. It was presented to us, well, there's bus, going to be bus stops, you know, maybe buses will be a way to mitigate it. When pressed, there's no, there is no PSTA or Pasco County have plans for a bus stop. But that was an argument that they were going to mitigate the number of traffic counts, was by having these alternative modes of transportation that would reduce the number of traffic count. So that was, to me, that was being dishonest, lack of a better term, of, of knowing that when they made a presentation as far as mitigation. Things like that are frustrating, that we, that, that somebody could come in and do a, a dog and pony show, change, change completely their presentation in front of the commission, when things that are, that we vetted, I think we did a good job in vetting the applicant. And, and I'll just be honest, I was very, very disappointed that, I don't think the commissioners did their job, whether they passed it or not. I, I've seen them ask harder questions when somebody was doing something less significant in front of the commission, instead of honing down on some of the issues. I don't even know if they even looked at the planning and zoning meeting, quite frankly. But my frustr, so I, I kind of vetted, and you were here for the commission, I vetted my frustration. You know, if, if the commission has the ability, if we're just going to give that much evidence, because we just got to touch on, like you said, you know, we don't, they could do a cursory review of their application in front of us, more or less, and, and make the whole presentation in front of the commission, I get, I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated sitting on a Monday night, you know, even though it's once a week, to sit here for a few hours. You know, I could be home watching the hockey game, you know, when, when it doesn't matter. Especially if things of, that is significant to this community. I, you know, again, I, I, you know, I was being congratulated by, by those people who don't want to see any development. I'm not naive, and I told them, I'm not here because of you. I'm not here for objecting because of, you know, I don't necessarily agree with what your position is. I'm objecting because of the process, and that's my concern.
Understand.
I think the process is, and, and, and for, and you could share this with the commission, the fact that they did not sit it back seems they bastardized the process, as far as I'm concerned.
Understand.
Okay, and I, I want, that's why I wanted you to stay, because.
Not a problem.
You know, I'm vetting, and I wanted you here to hear me vet.
That's okay, and I appreciate it, I do.
And, yeah, and I would, I would share too. I, I feel much the same way, and I, and I think my frustration is largely with the process. I have a couple of questions, and I know we're not going to resolve this tonight, but I think at some point, we need to have another meeting to talk about some of the processes, and where they come from, and whether we have the ability to change them, or if we need to take something to the city commission to change some processes, to make projects like this one go more smoothly. And, and, you know, there's no point in us all sitting here from seven o'clock till one o'clock in the morning, hearing something, if they're going to completely ignore our opinions, and, and, and most of them not even mention it in the meeting. But I think part of what frustrates me is the fact that the project was so rushed when it was brought to us initially. Like I said, that is process. I think if, had we heard perhaps the rezoning prior to hearing, you know, at a separate meeting, to split some of the issues up, it, perhaps it would have gone smoother, I don't know. It, it was a lot to take in at one time, and, and obviously, we weren't prepared for it the first time we heard the item either. Anyway, so I think we need to open further discussions about how the process can be improved, so that, I mean, the outcome may ultimately be the same on cases like this, because we don't control the city commission, certainly, and we wouldn't profess to, but, but somehow, we need to feel that we're taken seriously, or there's a lot of us that aren't going to want to spend our valuable time dealing with this stuff.
I understand.
I'd like to just say that it could also be taken into consideration that a lot of stuff was presented because of us. That maybe it was, they didn't think about it too much, because I know a bus thing was actually brought up, and they said, well, we haven't taken it to PST or anything like that because of the fact that we don't even have it approved. So they did say that, and then they sat there, maybe they took it after they seen us. So it's very possible that they actually took that into consideration, and that's why they presented it more at the commissioners' meeting.
I think if you remember, Renee, even, you brought it up, that they, that the, that you had, PSTA said, no, that wasn't even on their, you know, they had no plans for a bus stop there.
Yeah, they said they didn't have that because they didn't have it approved for the building to be actually made yet.
Well, that.
And to be fair, I don't, you know, I don't even want to try to remember what I said in, in the twenty-some hours of public hearings that I have been in, so I'll, I'll let the record speak for itself, there's a video record of it.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, and I, I understand what you're saying, what you said, but for them to come back with a whole litany and a whole plethora, a couple of days before the commission meeting, I called it a document dump, where they submitted a bunch more documentation, I think a week before the commission meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, you said updated reports.
That was part of the final plan development, yes.
I mean, so for me, not having everything is an incomplete application. If you're going to come to me, if you're going to come to this board with an incomplete application, then, then we shouldn't be hearing it until the application is complete. To have additional, and I'm talking about, you know, well, we had a few, a few people give testimony, as opposed to ten or fifteen people give testimony, that's significant. I sat here both, not all night, obviously, but I did watch it when I got home. The first, what was it, the Tuesday, and part of it on Wednesday, no, Tuesday. And, and I was just sort of aghast, that's, I can't, I drove all the way from Tampa, just to, just to say what I had to say last, this past Tuesday. Just, I had to go back to Tampa, just, just to vet my frustration as to the process. And like I said, I have no skin in the game, I have skin in the process. And, and that's, and that's the frustrating part, is we're not given all the information when we vote. Had we, and, you know, I think the right thing to do would have brought, even though, you know, you have reasons why you shouldn't, but have it come in front of. you know, you have reasons why you shouldn't, but have it come in front of the zoning board, and let us hear the entire application, and then if the commission wants to say, you know what, we disagree, we're going to vote in favor, that's fine, that's the prerogative. But not to give us, I don't want to use that kind of language, not to give us partial information, just to come full guns in the commission meeting, I think is, is totally inappropriate.
Is that what you were saying, that it's a preliminary and then a final? That's the two difference between?
Correct. So, I mean, they, and they were running overlapping, so there were, you know, there were documents, updated documents as part of the preliminary that came in with the final plan development, that, you had preliminary documents, the same documents, but some of them were updated. The transportation management plan is one of them. But we had conditions, and the conditions of approval that said, you know, you had this, they needed to submit an updated, expanded transportation management plan that had consideration for X, Y, and Z. So those things coming in, those were conditions of approval, and they went to the Board of Commissioners at first reading, you know, that way, but between there, those updated things came in, and those were conditions of final plan development, you know, so that had to be addressed prior to final plan development. So it was an overlapping process. You know, to your point, I think one of the things that, you know, that may be a good consideration is, you know, there's nothing in our code that prohibits the overlapping, you know, you can submit for preliminary and final at the same time. There's nothing in there, so there's no bright line there. Well, okay, perhaps that's something, you know, from moving forward from a code perspective to update and say, you know, preliminary plan development has to go through first and second reading, and then there's got to be, you know, sometime, you know, a break, you know, before, before final plan development, you know, can move forward. Those types of things would break it up a little bit. You're right, this was, there was a lot going on with, with these applications running, running simultaneously.
If, if I may.
Sure.
I'd, I'd like to expand on something each one of you has brought up, and maybe look at it a, maybe in a more holistic way. Uh, I don't, I don't want to rehash that particular event or approval. But when I first joined the board as an alternate, and sat over there, and then sat over there at the little chair, and then sat here, and it was made up of quite a few different people. Since then, we've had a number of events that have, and it's kind of cascaded, and it's got a little bit worse with each one, and I'm going to repeat what those are, and I just kind of wanted to share with you, and I'm going to throw a whole bunch of things against the wall, and that would include our counsel down there at the end, because we're probably going to need her input, and both the staff members down there, and this staff member, Hi Bry. Process, frustrated with the process, frustrated with maybe not being listened to, and, and this, and you're being acknowledged, and, and that's nice. So I, everybody agrees with that. Well, you know what? We can change the process. It's our process, just in ordinance, and rules, and, and code that she referred to. And so instead of just being pissed, we could say, let's use it as an opportunity to perhaps tweak, restructure, and look at what we're doing as staff, planning and zoning board, interacting with our Board of Commissioners, and everybody acknowledging what went well and what went poorly, and making some adjustments. We're not going to do it in a meeting, we're not going to do it in a month, probably take a couple of years, but we could make some changes that may be, we could have better outcomes. An outcome where we don't have two nights of testimony, two long meetings, and then everyone is just baffled by the result, whether, whether it would change the result or not. Okay, so I'm just thinking maybe more of a holistic thing. I'm kind of a planner and a rulemaker, and Ms. Vincent, when I sat over there and was asking you questions about comprehensive plan, because I'm into the rules, I'm into that part and making sure they work. Okay, so here's, I want to do a couple of historical things, bear with me. When I was the junior's member and sat there, I think it was you and that staff that had a presentation for developers to pay their own share, fair share of the fees for some of these very complex proposals that came up. And that proposal from staff had only been read when another PNC board member shot that thing down in the negative, and we all voted against it, and we were all totally confused. That's just one example, and no one's going to remember that other than Renee and Pat over there, when you guys proposed
Actually, I don't think I was here for that, so.
It was, it was a fee structure, so developers would have to pay for the outside consultants that the city has to hire for these massive complexes, because we don't have the staff to do it.
It was really for stormwater man, the stormwater relief.
Ah, it was traffic and storming, it made perfect sense. I'm reading them like, gosh, this makes sense. What it was really saying is when a developer applies, that they have to shoulder the burden of the expense that the city has to do if it takes outside planning. Anyways, there was a PNC board member, who's now Board of Commission members, who thought that that was a terrible idea, because he was pro-development, and pro-developer, just call it the way that it was, shot it down before we had a chance. So that's just one thing, that started this off. And that was the staff fees. And then about two years ago, more or less, when the Icarus property was developed, it was the Icarus, right, they were riding on an almost expired ten-year development agreement. We were baffled that a development agreement would last for ten years, and frankly, it confused us, because life changes. You can't do anything for ten years these days, you can't plan out ten years. And we were, now, whether it's good or bad, I'm not saying that, but what we did is, we thought, we don't think that's a good idea, and we recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we reduce that development agreement length of time to a more reasonable, that it can be reevaluated. You know what happened to that? It was promptly shot down by the BOC, probably by the same Board of Commissioner that was pro-developer, call it the way that it was, because it was unbalanced. So it, we're, we're in an unbalanced position right now, the developers have got the biggest seat at the table, fine. Now, I have to be cautious, I know I'm not pro-ergans, I'm just talking about things that have stood out in my mind, where I'm like, hmm, we sent up a revision, the planning and zoning board took the time to think about the development agreement, we submitted it, and it was sent back to us, it's not, go back to your room, you don't know what you're talking about. Now I'm going to have two other things that we've recently encountered that we really struggled with, that, that I don't think the outcomes have been that good with. First is a sign ordinance. We struggled with that sign ordinance, and when it, it more or less was an avalanche that came on top of us, we pushed back, we saw it again, a lot of time went through, there was a lot of sense of urgency from planning or staff to get this through, we did our best, and sure enough, that gosh darn planning, or sign ordinance has just been a muckety-muck. You know, ninety pages so that we can enforce plastic sign boards. I'm not quite sure what the whole purpose of that was, we can go back in time, but we complained then that it was way too much for this board to take on at one time. And that's when they were giving us these multiple readings, you know, where we've got five ordinance that went into one thing, and that was just a sign thing. Now, we got another one, we got that food truck one. What a gem that's turned out to be. Now, we did our best, we went up, I'm not sure what happened at BOC, but I do know that the food truck, we got a lawsuit going on with it right now, because it wasn't implemented right. We've got another one where it's being used against someone else, that's another one where we're just like, what happened there? You know, what, what, why did something that we spent time on maybe not have some of the best results? Did it go too fast? Was it too complicated? Was it being driven by someone or something? I don't know. I just wanted to use those as examples, and then, of course, we'll use the Ann quote Harbor projects as another one where, actually, I think the process went really good, everybody worked really hard, maybe the outcome wasn't everybody's thing, but I think that it's a good time where we can stop and go, what do we want to do as the PNC board? What is our goal? I, if you go to any other board or any other agency, you start at every meeting and say, here's our mission. Our mission should be read, it should be fifteen words long, it should start every meeting. This is our mission, what's our mission as the PNC board? Okay, that's just an idea. And then, why do we not have any teeth? This would go back to the first and second reading, that's a pretty decent suggestion, thank you for that, because I hadn't thought of that. I'm going to suggest that over time, the PNC board gets a seat at the table, more than a recommendation board. Well, we're obviously being ignored, call it the way that it is. And it doesn't have to be that way. I don't, I've never been on a PNC board anywhere else, there might be some municipalities where they're actually elected positions. There are some where maybe they have the rule in lieu of or with the BOC. I don't know, but I do know that nobody's very excited about how our efforts are being treated right now. And so I'll just call that a higher hurdle, that if the, this would be one suggestion, if the BOC is going to rule against the recommendation of the PNC, they ought to have a pretty gosh darn reason for it, they should have to come back and explain it. I'll just call it a higher hurdle, I don't know what that is.
Supermajority.
Okay. So I just want to throw out some ideas that everybody can have input on, that is staff, our, our legal counsel, or we as, as members, so I got to check off my list, otherwise I'm going to forget, okay? And then lastly, I, I drew a kind of a teeter totter here, where it's like our three arms of the government, you know, we're all balanced out. We got the PNC board, we got staff, we got our BOC. We're unbalanced, meaning that the PNC, I'm, this would just be my opinion, has the least amount of input into all planning and zoning decisions. And that the BOC is being wagged, and unfortunately, nobody take this personal, staff has way too much input on the, the decisions that are made via the recommendation process. I'm willing to say right here that Ms. Vincent carried more authority than everyone else in the room, more than the application, more than us, more than the BOC, that her recommendation alone made that project. That's just my opinion. They rely on staff recommendations so highly, maybe that's how it's supposed to be, but I would suggest something different. I would probably go the opposite direction and say staff shouldn't be recommending anything. Staff should be preparing the information for us, and we make that decision. And I'm going to be a little bit tougher. Why do we rely on a person who may or may not live in the city, who's a temporary transient entity, who's here now, gone later, to make some of the most important decisions that we have to make? That was supposed to be left up to us, right? So it's just a thought, is I, I'm kind of looking in hindsight, just going, why does staff have so much power over what gets done and what doesn't? Someone to say, well, they're the experts. I don't, I don't, I can't read that anywhere in any of our ordinances or in the comprehensive plan, it doesn't say that. It also doesn't say balance anywhere in the comprehensive plan. Um, okay, so that's, that's it, is that I think that if anybody has any ideas about how we can restructure what we do, whether we meet with the Board of Commissioners current, I would probably say future, that somehow, that the PNC board gets a little bit more skin in the game, I'd be interested in going down that road. Oh, I got one more, just when you thought I was going to quit talking. There's a board that's not represented, and I think that goes to the unbalanced part. There was a great commissioner a few years ago by the name of Larson, I think it was Jeff Larson, and he was one of the smartest, most thoughtful commissioners I ever saw. I'm one of the geeks that would watch all the movies, I didn't come in in person. And he single-handedly started the sustainability board, and I believe his wife is on it, I'm going from memory here, is that we've got this board that was started and is ignored in the planning process, and that baffles me, that in today's day and age, and I'm going to use the Ann quote Harbor project, it really is so much about sustainability, they had no voice at the table whatsoever. And so I'm confused as to how we've got this board, whose job is to specifically look at sustainability, just like we're supposed to look specifically in planning and zoning, and that's where that Board of Commissioners takes that information and weighs it all and makes a decision. But that's not how it works. It was obvious to everyone in this room, I was here only for one show, that that Board of Commissioners had made up their mind long before that meeting had held. The softball questions that came out from the gentleman that sat here were silly, they were leading questions, it was like a TV show. How easy a question can I ask to make it look like I'm asking a question, although it's obvious I've already decided how I'm going to vote? I'll end with that piece of sarcasm. Thanks for standing there, I, I didn't really have any questions for you, I wanted just to talk to everybody in general.
For the record, I do live in the city of Tarpon Springs, and when I came back, I have to live in the city. And so I sold a very nice, brand-new house in the city of Dunedin, to come back to work for the city of Tarpon, and give you my best. I do thank you for the input tonight, I think we can work with these things going forward. Um, there's a lot of things that I've tried to do in the past, like site plans for permitted uses by right, I would love for them to stop with this board, because I don't see the value in stringing out something longer than it needs to be. So, you know, I have, you know, ideas about that. Um, I think splitting land use and zoning decisions and not running them concurrently, that's something that, that the county recently started doing, of, you look at the land use map amendment on its face value against the comprehensive plan, forget all the other noise, you know, site plans and master plans and things like that, no, is it appropriate? So, yes, there are things that you can do that I think can temper the process, and, and maybe, you know, I can't say that the outcomes will be any different, but we can work on that. And just to that end, um, you know, as we go through the comprehensive plan update, and that's going to be kicking off in earnest, this board will be heavily involved in that, and I'll just, I promise, as will the sustain, all of the boards actually, will be involved in that process. So stay tuned for that, and I think a lot of this can be talked about during that comprehensive plan update.
Do, do you see, I mean, you've, you've served in other municipalities with regard to zoning and stuff like that, so if a zoning board recommends denial or approval, and, and their commission wants to do something different, do they have to have a supermajority?
No.
It just
Simple majority.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I've been in other jurisdictions, and I've been the consultant on the other side of the table, trying to pass things, and, and the, the commissions, pretty much always, as far as I'm, places that I've done business, reserve the final right to refuse or, or pass a project regardless of what the commission does. Uh, so that's
What the zoning board does, or what the commission does?
What the commission does. So it's, it's probably going to be hard to get entirely away from that situation, that, that happens everywhere, I think, but, but if you look at the percentages, we've been overturned approximately nineteen percent of the time for the last couple of years, and it seems to me like that's mostly on the, the more controversial, bigger items, probably. Uh, and I'm, that's just a number, I don't
How, how'd you get nineteen percent? Nice.
We ran the numbers recently.
But, but to that point, how many items do we have that are controversial?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, my guess is it's a pretty high number.
So if you, if you quantified the controversial issues, how, what percentage are you overturned?
Yeah, it's probably a lot higher.
By about eighty percent?
I haven't tried to do that, but, uh, anyway, question, can we choose to have a, a special meeting, in effect, a workshop-style meeting, where we could sit around a conference table? Obviously, the public still has to, to be invited, because it, it is sunshine, but I think at some point, a workshop where we can try to actually sit and work some of these things out, and come up with some ideas, and, in a, in a little less formal setting, even though it's still public, I think would perhaps be more effective than trying to air all this here like this.
No, absolutely, we, you know, we will, we can schedule workshops to, you know, to work through these things, you know, at, at your discretion, absolutely.
Would it, do we have interest in?
But listen, to make this process become more of a process, I have no, I mean, that, that's fine. Uh, I just, like I said, I've just, right now, there's, there's just a big frustration in the process, and, and if there's something that can be done to, to relieve that frustration, I'm all for it, because I, I don't want to waste my time on Monday nights.
Yeah, yeah, agree completely. Okay, well, can, can we kind of poll members and, and, uh, over the next week or so, and try to get a date set up, some, somewhere, uh, maybe let the dust settle a little bit, but, but somewhere in the not very distant future?
Certainly.
And then, can we also just make sure for that workshop, we've got specific agenda items, discussion topics that you guys want to discuss? And keep in mind, at workshops, you can't take any official action, so it'll just be, you know, like a brainstorming session, and the public doesn't usually have any input in those, so they can sit in.
Yeah, I'm assuming you want to go, you know, off this meeting night and do something separate, would be my, you know, and do something separate would be my... You know, you don't want to...
Yeah, I mean, from a personal perspective, I'd rather do it during the day. But I'll do what everybody else wants.
We'll do it on the weekend if that's what makes it work for everybody, so...
No, we won't. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, actually...
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, evening would have to be generally based on my schedule, unfortunately.
We'll figure it out.
And we don't want it to interfere with Pat's after-class schooling that we've been getting. It's been very good.
Okay.
Right? Okay.
No worries.
It's personal favorite. Thank you for staying.
No problem. No problem. You know, I'm here to listen.
I hope you're on the clock, so it's...
I don't have a clock.
After your last couple of weeks, probably not.
Yeah, if I was keeping a clock, it would be off for four or five days now.
Yeah, that was a brutal meeting. I can't say I watched all of it, but I watched a lot of it. If there's no further board comments, we stand adjourned.
Have a good night.
A little sore from that baseball.
Yeah, I'm going to sneak it behind you. Now, you know, after, like on Friday, I had to have somebody run for me. I couldn't run. Here's all I have, the first few days.